Plan board meeting for January 20th, 2016. We'll go through some of the bills. We have a bill from Pittney Bowes for $109.50. And we have one for cellphone bill for $94.64. In voices for companies. We have seven invoices from Graves Engineering. Total amount for the invoices are $3,854.30. All the invoices are approved. Do I have a motion to accept the bill as read?
So move to adj.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we've got a little bit of correspondence here from the TIC amendment. It attaches a public meeting invitation to discuss the proposed amendment number one to 2016 to 2019 transportation improvement program. Meeting will be held at the CMR PC Grand Conference Room on Wednesday, January 27th, 2016 at 5:00 PM. Anything special about that?
No, none of them are related to Charlton. It's over the next four fiscal years, a few slight amendments around Worcester County.
We have a report for Graves Engineering for January 8th, 2016. Catch basin through the Bay Path two. Graves is saying that catch basins, oil and hoods were not observed in any of the new site catch basins. I guess they are.
Yeah, they requested converting from the temporary occupancy, the engineering firm that handled the project, to a permanent occupancy. And Mike and I did the final review of the field construction and the gas and oil hoods were missing. So the engineer said as soon as possible he'll get them in and then he'll request an inspection. That's the last item for planning board site plan review.
Town of Oxford, planning board will hold a public hearing on Monday, January 25th, 2016, applicant for a special permit in site plan review approval submitted by Harrington Memorial Hospital Incorporated. The applicant proposed to use an existing building with existing parking lots at 78 Sutton Ave for the purpose of physical physician's office and urgent care facility. The property is owned by Howard Improvement Properties LLC. Still be that building just before campus.
Okay.
It's right across the driveway from Markaskin.
Oh.
Okay. That one, okay.
Isn't Home Depot down that way too?
Yeah.
Yes.
Notice, public hearing in town of Spencer will be held on Tuesday, February 16th, 2016. Site plan review application, ZPT and Energy Solar LLC. The applicant is requesting a site plan review, applying for a major utility ground solar farm site. That's again another one. And that's it for correspondence, but it's more for this week. All of those end words. It's a little early for a public hearing. Alan, do you have anything maybe you'd like to discuss before that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we could go to the permit administration extensions.
Right.
The first one is annual extension from Mr. Stephen Green, Forever Helpful LLC. It's the Yankee Crossing site plan you approved a few years back on Route 20 where the diner is. And he's just looking for his annual one-year extension, which being January 20th of 2017. Again, it's just the market and in terms of wanting to do his project at some point when he gets more interested tenants. It's an, just to remind everybody, it's an 18,000 square foot building you approved. It's a main building and a 2,500 square foot secondary building that would be a pad for either fast food or a bank. And then it was a steep site, so you can enter the back on a raised parking lot at the second level and enter the front in a front parking lot at the first level. It's a very nice design and he's just looking for an annual extension and seeing if in the next year he might be able to get going.
When will be extended, Mr.?
January 20th, 2017.
Do I have a motion to extending Yankee Crossing proposal development 16, Worcester Road Top Mass to January of 2017?
So move to adj.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And the second one, let me just grab the file, is from Mr. J. Cohen on his two subdivisions. If you recall, he auctioned land down on Freeman Road on the east and the west side. And a few years back, the planning board approved two subdivisions, the reserve east and the reserve west. And they were very upscale in terms of housing and he's just riding out the economy. Those extensions would be to February 7th, 2017.
So motion to accept the J.J. Cohen's request for an extension for the Freeman Road project to February 7th, 2017?
So move to adj.
All in favor?
Aye.
I believe the folks are here for the Griffin Road Solar. Are you here for Griffin Road?
Residence, yes.
Yes. There was a medical emergency last week and the engineer had to go on emergency surgery. I'm not even sure how he's doing. So the company had called and asked for an extension and not to hold the hearing this evening.
When was that? Was that posted somewhere?
No, I, she called me Thursday and I'm sorry, but I didn't have your name or number and we, you know, just have to just continue with the segment.
Um, you have my name because I told you my name last week.
Yeah, but just one of those things, I apologize, but he called and we're just extending it this evening, so.
It would be the next meeting.
It would be the next meeting, which would be the first Wednesday in February, I believe the 3rd.
Same time, the first?
It would be the same time, 7:15, yes.
Can I give you my telephone number?
Sure, sure.
Because I don't find that really acceptable. I really wish that, if you had found out last Thursday, I think you would have been able to.
The thing is, the town hall was closed on Friday. Monday was a holiday and, you know, maybe on Wednesday.
So we had two days. It's kind of, all right, I'll accept it this time, but please.
Yeah, well, you only said the town hall was closed on Friday.
Next time.
And it was closed on Monday.
Those unusual circumstances and we're, we definitely will hold it and call you if it does get continued another time, but I'm pretty.
Because I've taken two weeks of preparation and, you know.
We'd be glad to hear it at the next hearing session, no problem.
Well, of course you will.
That's right.
All right, see you now. See if we can wait until 7:20.
We can move on to some of the growth management items. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to go to the Ponkin subdivision if we can for a few minutes on a couple of items that Mike Andre and I have been working with, Mike Mallett from the bank on. One of them, and I'll give you a copy, we've got three items and all of them are working out fine. The bank is very cooperative. Glad to be working with them. One of them is, and not to get into heavy technical detail, but you'll recall from last fall, there's a chronic groundwater management item at the bottom of the cliff on the left when you come in. There was a temporary fix and everybody agrees that it's time to make it permanent. So Mike went out there and wrote the summary the other day on what exactly should be done on three or four items there to deal with it. So it's not just a temporary patch job on the drainage. And I gave it to Mike Mallett and he'll have his contract to do the work that's on the private property. There's a little catch basin cleaning work related to it in the public right of way that we'll forward this to Jerry Foskin and Jerry can take care of that, which is just a routine maintenance. So we'll keep on top of that. We had put in the planning board letter to him when we flagged it last fall, could you please complete this by February? So Mike thought it was good in January to give him the checklist of what specifically to do. So that's one item. The second item is in the subdivision, the actual road work for the phase three road section that, you know, had deteriorated and collapsed. And Mike had a meeting in the field two weeks ago with their contractor and they'll really gear up in March, but they're already doing some work out there right now. And that leads to the third item, and I told Mike Mallett that as your staffer, I have no problem with it, but I defer to the planning board this evening and let them know tomorrow. He was going to submit the phase five revision to dead end where the cliff is and you had wanted him to submit it this winter, but for money management, he was hoping that you would let him put it off until later in the building season when they complete the phase three road work. Because right now, the bank board has authorized him to spend a very large amount of money to fix that road. He'd like to get it fixed, get some lots under agreement with a developer from another town who is interested in eight or 10 of the lots, then turn to coming in here with a revision during the next building season instead of now in the winter. It's hard funding wise and time wise to manage both a revision coming before you and getting that done. And I frankly don't have a problem with it because they've really gone to bat. Most banks don't do this. They foreclose and let something sit. And I think he is eager also from our meetings to really get it done and move the subdivision forward. So I told him I'd run that proposed schedule by you and give him the feedback tomorrow.
I think the proposed road is on the right inside to check in. There's only probably three hospitals left. We need to happen.
Yeah, he had his way, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Been able to sell everything in it.
Yep.
Which is a good point.
Awesome.
So he wants to take the road going up on the hill there.
Yes.
Make tell.
Yeah, he wants to get that fixed. And he actually met with me and the developer not too long ago who's interested in buying the lots once the road is fixed. He wants to get through that effort, then come in with an engineer, and again, he left Burton Engineering, he has an engineer from Rutland actually, that he hired recently who would design something and either spring or summer, probably come in during the building season, once they get the road work done. And he can focus on that with you on, that's the phase five revision. He dead ends so he doesn't have that ridiculous cliffside thing and he actually lose a lot or two, so.
Sounds good.
So those are the three items. They're working on phase three. He'd like to redesign phase five as soon as possible and short term, we'll continue to work together on the adjusting the temporary drainage at the stub of Henry Vista Lane to something more permanent in the next month or two.
Give me a budget if you want. Doesn't take that long. Okay. Five minutes.
Have a final draft budget if I can summarize once I hand it out to the board. One in this direction and Jane and the board members on this direction. It's very standard, the same format we use every year. There's a cover letter, which I can go back to in a moment. If you flip, there's three pages that are from the town accountant's computer printout that show previous fiscal years from 2008 up to now in each of those accounts, 2016 line. And what I drafted for you is planning wood stipend staying the same, planning director salary, making the attempt yet again to restore me and putting it what it would be if I was restored to full-time administrative assistant. Because Jane's union is negotiating, at the moment, there's no increase. The increase would be related to the union negotiation. We were told just to temporarily plug her in, anyone who's in the clerical union at the current rate. Planning studies, as we did last year, I wanted to at least increase it from $980 to $1,000. It's only $20 and prices do go up. Last year, they denied us the $20 increase. I think it's worth asking again. Planning expenses, the $73.50. Comprehensive mapping, kicking it up by $10 to 490 to 500. So literally, your budget for operation is going up $130 just to top off a few little things. And beyond that, on salaries, it goes up several thousand in terms of trying to restore me. And then I did a cover letter that pointed out two things. Again, that the administrative assistant's salary line item is preliminary because of clerical union adjustments and her union continuing to request to rectify the shortfall she's put up with for several years. I mean, the title administrative assistant, but not being legally and ethically paid the money, we discussed that before. And also pointing out that yet again, you're requesting my restoration to full-time. And that's the basics of it. It is due, I don't remember where it's in front of me, it's due, hang on one second. Budgets are due on the 9th, so this is your only meeting before the 9th. Hope we can finalize this evening and then submit it.
Now, your salary includes the one from the EDC director, correct?
Not my salary, no.
No.
I don't work for them. You just assign me as a workhorse.
Okay, gotcha.
My.
Because wasn't it the last town meeting where we combined the, I don't know.
They tried to and none of that worked out.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah. They've created a new position, even though they claim it's just changing the title of mine, but as my attorney has pointed out to them in writing, nothing has changed.
Okay.
They have a vacant position, part-time, unfunded, under them.
Okay.
And you have a full, you have a part-time with me that you're trying to restore to full-time.
Gotcha, okay.
Thank you. It's hard to keep track of it with all the scheming, I'll put it politely.
Yep.
The expenses, pretty much going to stay the same?
Yes. I don't feel you, we could be successful raising them. I think we do the best we can, even though prices go up on things a little bit, but I just don't see the point of even asking for the increase. If they turned us down on a $20 increase this year, to ask to increase something and align on it by a few hundred dollars is fruitless. I think we should just, I think we can function even though we could do better with a slight increase, but.
That budget covers the paperwork and stationary stuff and all that, right?
Right, yeah, all equipment, office supplies, basic operational expenses. I think we ask for an increase that it, they'll just say no. I don't mean to be cynical, but, so I felt leave it there and do the best we can, even though prices go up every year.
What's the expenses for the economic?
That's always something I fill out and submit with your budget. They have one line item under EDC. It's $1,931. It's been cut over the past several years, more than half. It used to be about $4,000. And that relates to my staffing of them. It could be items of expenses for them, supplies for them, various things that come up related to them on the cost of whether it's a report or going to a meeting that has a fee or something for myself or the EDC members. The EDC's level funded it for about three years now and isn't looking to change anything. So again, with my hours cut, how do you rationalize a line item increase if I have no time to do anything for them with a several hundred hour cut other than go, have, go to their bi-monthly meetings and keep them in the loop for what you're involved in? So that's about it.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I think the motion to accept is.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nothing, not that I'm cold, but.
We don't know. I don't feel much heat in this room. Really don't.
It's cold in here.
Yeah. I don't know. Is Brendan coming to?
I haven't heard from him in a week and a half.
It is cold.
It's not working, just.
Yeah.
It's just low.
That is well.
Get the circulation. My son turned the heat up to 85 last night.
No way.
Yeah, it was 90 in my house within like a half an hour.
That sounds awesome.
What?
Yes, really.
Hold on, I had to open the windows to like make it livable. It does.
Does good tests. I can summarize our chart items from the last hearing session on the North Sturbridge Road Zero Point Solar or LSE Cygnus LLC, which is the name for that particular project. We had three areas that we were going to continue focusing on tonight and I believe we could complete everything tonight. The first one is the construction sequence plan that we talked about. And we put it in your packet, I've got extras if anybody wants from, do you have a copy?
I have.
It's addressed to the chairman, it was from Brendan Gove and he gave it to us last week. And I emailed it to you and we also put paper copies in. It's three pages and it's exactly what we asked for. Phase one would be his schedule for how he would physically do the site preparation and grading across the various fields that he's proposing to install. Phase two is racking installation. Phase three is then the inverter installation. Phase four is panel installation and phase five is working with National Grid on interconnection. And I'll defer to the board, if you have any questions or concerns, to Leslie as his engineering representative, but it certainly looked like what we were looking for and it certainly makes logical sense of sequencing and something for them to follow with the building commissioner, myself and Graves Engineering being able to follow it week to week as they're out there with actual construction and we oversee that management of it.
I have a question. Okay, he's listed out here what they're going to do and what steps, but it was my understanding that it was not going to be the first site and go through all the phases, then jump over to the second site, that he was going to overlap when he got to a certain point. Is that correct?
Yeah, I can read at the top of page two and I think, hopefully this will clarify and then Leslie could jump in if needed. Once phase one is completed for the first project, phase two would begin immediately for that project while phase one begins for the next. So.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so that way.
So once phase one is done on?
Number one.
Number one.
Yep.
Then they jump over to phase two to start?
Yeah, and he'll do phase one for the one next to it. Similar to when they do a, say Ponkin is a five-phase subdivision, Gunter Farm Estates is a six-phase subdivision. When you finish the first stage task for the first section of the subdivision, you start the second one and move to phase two in the first one. So you have two open, literally, at any one time.
Any other comments with that, Alan?
Not with that unless the board wishes to.
Quick question, just, it doesn't mention when the grass gets ripped out.
Oh, the low man seating?
Yes.
Good question.
Usually you want that.
Would you want that?
Sooner than later.
Probably.
I don't know where it falls.
And a question, I guess, to Leslie. Common sense, to me, it would probably be as part of phase five because phase four is panel installation?
Right.
And then you low man seat after the panels are completely installed.
During.
So it could be a task added to phase five in the interconnection phase?
Yes.
Send it to number six?
Yes. Add it as number six in phase five. What I'd recommend ultimately is later this evening, when you're considering conditions, that there be a condition that incorporates this schedule as you amended tonight directly into the permit.
Leslie, this is just standard procedure for any solar farm, not just this particular one, right?
For, yeah, I mean, pretty much.
Pretty much. Yeah.
Pretty much standard.
Yeah.
The second item of the three areas that we're revisiting and continuing this evening is the Graves review.
Yep.
And as you know, there were about eight or 10 items that were relatively minor, either providing a little more information on some hydrology, adjusting a footnote or correcting a calculation or two. And Graves reviewed it and provided the revision review report, three in this direction and two right here.
On that, I don't know. I don't think.
And everything is all set, if I'll be very brief. Basically, Michael reviewed each of the items numbered and acknowledged that everything is okay. I just want to point out two items. The very last comment on page four, he added a new comment that sheet number eight is missing from the plan revision. And the final plans that the planning board receives after the, after the vote for us to file as our final version should just include that.
Okay.
And also going back to page three, on the arborvitae layout, they correctly, he pointed out, reduced the spacing from 10 feet off center to four feet. We always require the four feet. So they made that and he pointed that out. So in terms of the civil engineering, we're all set. And our third area, which I know folks are here for, is the landscaping. And I thought we could spend some time right now with the Butters, with Leslie, on going over the landscaping. I know that there's been discussions and I had a phone call with Tim yesterday on the board suggestion that you meet and go over with them prior to tonight on making sure that he's satisfied. And if you can summarize that first briefly and then we can discuss it with the two gentlemen here.
I can. We talked about it on the phone. I actually didn't end up going out there. We kind of communicated via email and some drawings. Brendan had already spoken to the Butter across the street and he had requested that additional plantings be put along this fence line for this.
That's the gentleman that's in Florida.
Yes, he's in Florida.
I spoke with him too on the phone.
So he had already requested that. So I had forwarded that plan on, and we also discussed adding some more arborvitae plantings here. His house is here, there's going to be a proposed gate down here. They were concerned about the view of the gate and also, you know, an increased buffer here. We had maybe five trees there before and now there's, what's that on this plan? I think there's 20 some odd now, so it's increased dramatically from how many there were before. So we increased this buffer and this buffer, so there's kind of a dual, the buffer now coming from the line of sight from Santos. Other than that, the rest of the buffers remain the same except for up here. Jay had requested some additional plantings over here. They were kind of sparse. It's actually not updated on his plan. But we did double the amount here and I sent him a PDF of the plan and he responded that that was great, thank you. So I think he was okay with that. Everything else, I believe, was already on the plan the last time we saw it. Those are the only changes to the landscape.
I'd like, Tom, if you've got any comments, have you reviewed this with her or?
I did. I was on that drawing there. This, it shows a silt fence off of my border, my boundary, right?
Yes.
Right where the entrance will be coming into the road and it goes up around the back of my lot. So in reading one of the drawings that I got by email, it stated that, it didn't say beyond the silt fence, but I guess that's my question. How did they word it? I'll just say it the way I can say it.
That's fine.
That parts where there wasn't going to be major excavating going on, they would be cutting the trees down and not removing the stumps. Everywhere else, I'm assuming on the other side of that silt fence should be removing the stumps. There's a lot of excavation work back there to get the water to run the right way to the retention ponds. So my question is, is that still a clear cut on the other side of that silt fence headed towards my border? And if it wasn't, or if it was rather, you know, even say 10 feet off of my border, if there were existing trees, could they be left instead of clear cut because it gives me another natural buffer? I didn't see how that would cause a problem as far as, but I don't know, you know, what.
Your, your property line, this silt fence pretty much runs like on your property line.
It starts on my property line.
Yeah.
Halfway, a third of the way out, it goes up away, starts to gradually.
Right, it starts to gradually move away from it. But there's a swale here to, like you were saying, a detention swale to get the water over to that. But there's a swale here, like you were saying, a detention swale to get the water over to that basin.
Okay.
So we have to cut the trees in that area to be able to grade in that swale. Anything that's beyond that, like between like these lines and that silk fence, they'll leave whatever they can. They won't cut them just to cut them.
And one of the drawings you sent me, it was a blown-up version. You could see my lot more clearly.
Mm-hmm.
And there's a turnaround in my driveway. So opposite the turnaround in the driveway is approximately where that swale would end from what you just told me.
Correct.
Because it's running right along the border there.
Yep.
And then it starts to shy away gradually towards the solar field.
Right.
So about at that point, there's a pine grove there right now, probably 15 to 20-foot-high trees, which gives me a pretty decent buffer right there. I would love to be able to keep that if I could. It's under a property. It's not a mine, but.
Yeah, that, unfortunately, that's right in the area where we need to do the swale. And there's an emergency turnaround right here that was requested by the fire department, so we can't get rid of that to move that. We had to bump that driveway down to get that turnaround in as required by emergency vehicles.
I thought the turnaround was further back towards the road. Maybe it's not.
No, it's right, it's like right at that same point where your.
Where my turnaround is?
Yeah, it's probably right in line with it.
So just beyond that is where I'm talking. So if you were to go.
So there's a swale all in that area. I mean, from the end of your driveway, that's all a detention swale, so that'll all be.
So maybe I could ask you this way, that side border of mine is approximately 100 feet. How far does that swale go on the border?
I mean, it comes all the way back to the basin. I mean, there's probably only 10 feet between the edge of that swale and where your property line is, so there's not really much room for them to leave anything. I mean, they'll leave what they can. They're not going to, you know, cut trees down where they don't have to grade in that swale, but they're going to have to degrade in that swale.
Okay, so the other plantings you're adding?
Mm-hmm.
I wouldn't see this well because it would be in the ground anyways.
Right, it's only like a foot deep, so you won't see it.
Is it, is it grass?
Yeah, it's a grass swale. It's just going to look like a little depression in the lawn.
Is there anything that's planted in that swale, or is it just gravel?
Just grass, just grass.
Just grass, right.
These plantings are here too, look.
Correct.
I guess the other question I had was where the gate's located. I couldn't tell by the drawing I was looking at. Is that, is that gate, I mean, that's going to be 12, 14-foot cut from the road to get about to where the gate is. And elevation's the road, I think, is about that much lower than where you'd be working.
Mm-hmm.
Is that gate just the post and the gate, just like an open flat area?
Yeah, it's just a, it's not, it's just like a swing gate, just to keep vehicles from going up the road.
And that'll do that? You won't be able to drive around it? I wouldn't want anybody to be able to drive up to the post and just drive around the gate.
I mean, it's, I suppose somebody could drive off the road and go around it, but they won't. I mean, where are they going to go? Because this whole thing is all fenced in. The solar array is all fenced in.
Yeah.
And then there's another gate to get in that has a lock on it, so.
Yeah, they could go back to the next gate, and they've got a gravel road to hang around it if they wanted to.
I, I know the one on Oxford Road that they just finished the gate and came to a field. And I noticed a couple weeks ago that, just before they moved the last of the equipment out, they stuck a couple larger rocks from the gate down on both sides of it, just so you couldn't drive around it.
Which is fine. I'm just looking for.
Anything, so they fanned them out on each side, so I.
I'm sure that they would be fine with doing something like that. I can't imagine they would be opposed to it.
That wasn't a request of ours. I think it was the property owner, who owned the property, requested those rocks to be placed so that you couldn't drive around it. I don't.
Those were my main concerns, really. Everything else looks fine. I expect I'll see the top of that array in some spots for a little bit of time, and then hopefully the growth will be quick enough that it won't be too long. And they did add quite a few plantings along that fence, almost doubled what was there.
Any other concerns that?
No, that's pretty much it. I'll just say it again, like I said now on the phone. You know, if they do it right, I've got a nice private lot, really, for the rest of my life.
Yeah.
If they don't do it right, I get a nice one.
Well, and that's a good point that I want to bring up, that so many people think over and over again, and we repeat it over and over again, we're done at the hearing. We're not. This is an early part of the project. Myself, the planning board's engineering consultant, but individual members themselves, will be managing this for a few years. We work on it. We'll be out there. If something isn't done according to what is designed or approved, particularly with our engineer, we'll be requiring them to fix it or it doesn't move forward.
Right.
That's the way it works. So we do manage a lot of these all the way through to the very end to make sure that it doesn't slide away from what we've all agreed to.
And in that time, we could have conversations.
Absolutely. If you felt that something is not going with what we've discussed tonight and what we've approved tonight, and you notice it on your own, just get in touch with me. We'll go out and we'll look at it. That's what we do.
We've had those issues up until hell. You know, things were going along great, and we had a bad winter and bad spring, but between Alan and our engineer, they kept going up there and making sure stuff was marked, and so.
Everybody's been very helpful to us as well. I appreciate that.
That's good. Do you want to make a motion to accept this?
I've got some draft conditions.
Sure.
We want to close the hearing and then.
Do I have a motion to take this here?
Second.
Alan, you've got some draft conditions?
Yes, if I can summarize them briefly. Some of them are standard. Some of them are specific to the project. The first one is standard that the planning board is approving the site plan permit for a period of two years only, which means that it needs to be completed within 24 months or the applicant can ask for an extension. And that's, you put that in every single type of permit to make sure people don't just come in to get things designed and put them on the shelf, so that's routine. The second one is, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant is required to get a written notice to proceed from the planning board or staff, and that won't happen until we have an onsite pre-construction meeting between the applicant's, their engineer, and our engineer, after which I would then receive our engineer's report on that meeting and contact the building commissioner for permit issuance. Third, at the other end of the project at the end, prior to issuing any type of occupancy or operation permit, either temporary or permanent, the planning board needs to sign off on the certificate, and we will not provide the signature until our engineering agent confirms that all requirements and conditions of the approved design have been properly adhered to and completed. Fourth, we're attaching the latest Graves review report dated January 20th to the approval, which is what we went over earlier.
Construction sequence?
Yes, that's, that'll be the next one, yes, Mr. Chairman. The next one is, yes, exactly what you said. Fifth, the planning board attaches and incorporates into the permit the January 20th construction sequence proposal. Next, the applicant will comply with all requirements of the planning board's written site plan construction inspection schedule, which details at what stage is a field work. You can't move forward until our engineer goes out and gives you the green light to move to the next stage of activity. The next one is disassembly performance guarantee. And Brendan is aware that this is in a residential neighborhood, so the planning board requires in residential neighborhoods disassembly performance guarantee prior to the certificate of operation. We've done it with other projects of his, and we'll require that. Next is landscaping performance guarantee. That we always require at least a 12-month landscaping performance guarantee after installation. And that way, anything that doesn't take root, has problems in the winter, has problems in the summer, gets replaced in that one-year period. And our engineer will stand top of that. And the only other item I have is, do you want to just add a condition that regarding that particular driveway, they'll put the boulder fanning, and our engineer will inspect it to sign off that it's proper to avoid any trucks going around the entrance way? How would we reference that particular one? Which one, how do we identify?
I think if we call it the driveway for array R1.
Let me just write this down, driveway for array, R-1?
Yes.
I could write it up that way and refer to the planning board's engineer from Graves reviewing the configuration when you install it and either saying it'll work or wanting it adjusted in some manner.
Right.
Thank you. Those are my recommended conditions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, did you add in the number six on that construction sequencing to add in the low man seed?
Yes.
Is that part of it?
Yeah, yeah.
On phase five?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah. Do I have a motion to accept the North Sturbridge Road, I remember what, mounted solar facility as Alan read all the different questions?
Second.
All on table?
Aye.
All right. Write it up, send it out, and file it and process it all. Send you a copy too.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, then we can get to the other ones, you know, for potential warrant, but since our folks are here, it makes sense to continue the discussion. Do you want to come up there?
Matt, and I'd like to come up to the table here.
Another chair over here.
Is there any more articles that might get some input from the board out?
Okay, sure.
Think Alan can describe it a little better?
I'll summarize briefly, and it was Lisa's initiative. She came to us a while ago that she and Anselu were having issues. It's happening in every community. As we get the smaller subdivision lots and the smaller, more urban-sized lots, a lot of people with just trends and lifestyle want barnyard animals. You've seen in every community. I live on the west side of Worcester, you've seen in my neighborhood.
Yeah.
And I'm sure you're aware, and we chatted a little bit last week about, you know, and we had, not to laugh about it, but one funny story of you don't do a planning board permit on that, what happens? In one of the subdivisions a few years ago, we went to accept the road and the drainage basin, and a lady had bought one of the brand new subdivision houses, didn't know what the basin was all about, put a fence around it and put her two donkeys and a horse in it. So if you had some type of zoning bylaw for, like some communities have done for a planning board site plan review in these smaller subdivision urban-type lots, then compliance would have been she would have filed, they would have had her set up for structure and location in the proper location. You could have had a hearing, notified the Butters, contacted Board of Health, Animal Control for any input or recommendations or involvement. And it doesn't use CERC, Animal Control, or Board of Health. I've talked to several other planners in the area, and what their boards are doing is looking at it from a land use planning point of view as part of the residential development. What's the right location for this? And is it out of control in terms of scale of what they're proposing? A board would have a right to say, well, you know, when you're putting that, you put it on the other side of the yard, you're not bothering the neighbor. So the site plan approval puts it on the other side of the yard, that type of issue. And then we had talked specifics last week of, we can get to that a little later, about specific wording of how you would revise it, but that's the issue. And I thought Anna and Lisa did a great job of explaining what's going on out there that, you know, it would help to address this somehow. And we are one of the last communities, frankly, I can't find a community in central Mass that hasn't done, most of them have the planning board do the site plan review. A couple of them are having their zoning boards do it. But since our last meeting, I talked to five more planners, and they all said that they've been doing it in their community, and that's all you really focus on. You're not usurping other boards, but it can help control the scale of it and the location of it, that type of thing. Then we talked about chickens and roosters, but we can get into that a little later. But that's, that's the overview, Melissa.
Were you aware that we kind of drafted up something in regards to acres and stuff like that?
I'm not sure of the volume.
I think I heard around 60,000 square feet or whatnot, but I'm not, I haven't read anything in detail on it.
Yeah, we discussed it. We haven't written it, but just looking at, if you look at, I can give you this, you can keep that. What we have right now is what's in front of you. Our current zoning bylaw has a line for livestock keeping on a residential parcel over five acres, and then the next line of whether it's allowed or not allowed or how, under five. That's what Charlton has had since like 1987. And we kind of kicked around at the last meeting that you'd lower the by right, the Y-Y-Y across, you'd lower it down, whether it's four acres or three or more than two, for instance. Allow it by right, and then you adjust the second line and change it to something. For instance, I suggested food for thought two acres, because right now, you require a site plan review of anything up to five in the non-residential zones. And if you really look at a zoning map, that's not much land, and it doesn't happen there anyway. So if you changed it, instead of five and five, two and two, for instance, then you're catching all of the subdivision new lots that come along and the smaller ANRs that are really urban developments. Developers, even though it's a 60,000, and you could go to 60,000 if you want, that's one thing. That's the minimum in the agriculture. But whether it's 60,000, which is about an acre and a half, or it's the two acre, anything in that range, anything smaller than that, now you're getting into density that, even though it's Charlton, it's an urban density, and that's where you get your problem. It sounds like a lot of land, but it isn't if it's an acre and a half or two acres, and the neighbors are causing issues with each other, or Animal Control is finding complaints or concerns. So you look at some of the other communities, and some of the smaller ones, the Paxtons and the OKMs, they're still at the five acre. But the more suburban communities that are seeing the residential, new residential, new house development size of lots are going down to the two at least, or something like that. And 60,000 is food for thought too. I mean, you know, anything in that rough range, but it makes sense when you get smaller than that that, you know, they want to keep barnyard animals, maybe they should come in. And it's allowed by right under site plan. We're not saying you can't do it. We're just saying the board is the authority on the specifics of it, how large it will be and the location of the structures, and making sure they're not going to put them in something like a retention basin or a swale or something, which people will do on their own. I'm sure you see it in your day-to-day.
That's fine.
Yeah. Two donkeys and a horse.
Any comment at the time, or new here?
I will say from the, from the position of Board of Health, we haven't run into the problems that Animal Control sees day-to-day. So unless it falls under the nuisance bylaw, specifically noise, we're really not getting that many complaints. And we did have one complaint this year. It was specifically with the rooster, the noise. And their land parcel was larger than five acres. And what the real story behind that was, we don't know. We suspect that might have been motorcycle, rooster, an ongoing thing beyond, you know, agricultural, you know, animals, so. But we're not really running into it as far as issues. So from a Board of Health point of view, we go out, if there's a call, make sure there's food, water, the animals look, you know, healthy and whatnot, and that they're neatly cleaned and, you know, it's not a mess. We've had some other instances, again, with odor in much larger than the five acres. So as far as a complaint from our office, we haven't run into that. I know, Lisa, that you have, and I'm sure you guys run into it all the time in doing your animal inspections, you'll see more of it, so.
Would there be anything in the proposals that if somebody was to have horses that the window pile couldn't be any bigger than so many square feet or anything? I mean, as far as a nuisance?
I wonder if that still could just completely falls into your joint world, because when I talk to the other planners and from what I see in all the other communities, they seem to limit the planning board role to location of where you keep them and number of animals. That type of thing, I think, falls more into Animal Control and/or Health. I think we wouldn't even get involved in that.
Okay.
And it really would be animal inspection.
Yeah.
Or the Animal Control.
Okay.
So the animal inspection is really the farms, what we explained the last time. Animal Control is dogs and cats and domestics. And the animal inspection is under the Board of Health, and they handle farm calls. Obviously, there's some overlap because general public doesn't always understand that there's a difference in the course of the conversation. Anne might take a call, and someone will complain about livestock or whatever, and at that point, if. it becomes an animal inspection or a health issue. The reason that I like it is because I think as the town grows, it gives us a little more latitude to be able to stop future complaints. So that when we have people who live on lake parcels that are quarter acre and they have two horses and a goat and seven chickens and a rooster, that's very close proximity. So, I like the idea of having something in place before it gets to the point where, you know, it almost becomes a bigger issue. I'd rather be a little more proactive and see something put in place earlier. And, you know, Alan was saying before, that the planning board would be able to help create visual buffers, make sure that, you know, things are not too close to property lines, not infringing upon other people's rights. As well, people have a right to have their animals, their neighbors have a right to peace and quiet. So, I, I, when I brought this to Alan, and he had his intern do research over the summer to see what the best way would be to go, um, that was kind of my intent. Wasn't to obviously step on any toes, but it's a situation that I have seen, you know, since Ann and I have been doing Animal Control and with Ann doing animal inspection for so long. I think the problem is only going to get worse, but we're seeing a lot of chicken coops just driving around town. I can make, you know, oh, there's a new one there, a new one there, a new one there. And right now, there are no bulls. And once people have them, they are going to be grandfathered in, even if this changes. So, because they'll have use of previous use. So, I think waiting too long is just going to create even bigger issues in the future.
Basically, if we change part of the zoning package to, to make the public out there feel comfortable is, you're not going to really try to stop anybody from raising animals. We just want to make sure that what they're raising fits the neighborhood. Because if we're going to say you can't have animals in them, well, it's never going to fly.
And you wouldn't have that legal right. In Massachusetts, any administrative site plan, you're not determining whether they can do it or not, you're just determining the specifics of it, how it's managed. Yes, that's a good point.
So, I think last time, you spoke, Alan, last, last meeting, talks about when somebody makes an application, they're going to be specific to what they're going to have, correct?
Yes.
And at that point, we can solicit comments from Animal Control, Animal Inspection.
Inspection.
Yep. And they can give us input on.
Absolutely.
How to manage it from that point.
Right. What we do with every site plan right now for the other stuff, we do the same way. We would send a cover letter with a copy of the plan to them, along with some other boards and departments that get all of them too here. And they can either write back, speak to me, come to the hearing, or all three. And you can take their input, uh, you can incorporate it in, absolutely.
So, I think that's how you'd be proactive before it comes to nuisance, you know, certain phone calls.
Board of Health would be a backup as well?
Oh, yeah, and send them everything, absolutely.
They, they have to be. I mean, it's really, the livestock is really Board of Health, they'll be more than Animal Control. We just, we tend to hear more because that's our field, that's our, that's our field of work, we're on the ground every day, so. We, we tend to hear a lot of stuff and try to help people out. But when it comes to, you know, roosters and noise, and my neighbor has three horses on one acre and it smells, it's allowed. There's, there's no, there's really no, you know, the town doesn't have any governance over any of that on, on really small parcels, and I definitely see that as a problem. And also, we point out it's for the well-being of the animals too. Absolutely. I mean, I guess you can have them, but you can't abuse them.
Through the chair.
I'd just like to point out when you're considering your parcel size and going through the schematics of it, I could tell you, um, the three of us have had issues with chickens, specifically in the roosters. And the consensus that Board of Health has from the residents, it's a sensitive, sensitive topic. And that the town, they want their chickens, they don't want people looking at them, and they, it's a very, um, it's a big deal, you know, so to be able to explain it exactly what you're trying to do, because I think coming off at the beginning, it sounds like, oh, another rule, another regulation, it's never going to happen. It's, you know, I, and, and I just know it's a very sensitive subject, so it would really have to be laid out what the intent is and why, like Lisa's saying. Because it's, you know, chickens, they do smell, roosters are allowed. I mean, if you're in a close proximity, you know, quality of life is absolutely affected by it. And the Board of Health does not have anything to stand on. They go out, you know, it's, it's allowed, you know.
One thing that Planning Board Member Patty Ridlack said at the last meeting is, and I'm just more or less quoting her, that we need a two-thirds vote at town meeting for zone change, and we're not going to get it if the board isn't clarifying exactly what you just said, Matt, that, you know, because people, there's still a rural heritage of this town, even though it's more urban-type development on these smaller lots. And people are going to say if it isn't explained right, and also confirmed that we are supporting their rights, continuing all that. People are going to say, like you said, more regulation, and this won't go through. And the odds may be that it won't go through even if it's explained properly, and it might have to be tried again in another town meeting. But my own feeling is if it's articulated the way all of you have at the last meeting and tonight, people understand that it's not setting anybody up, it's not creating a trip up. It's to work it out even to the benefit of those people. It's a simple process to avoid that problem, and it's a win-win for everyone, so.
In addition to chickens, what other animals are topics or?
We've had a, an ongoing issue. I don't know how much you two have been involved with, uh, some pigs. There's been the, uh, the placement of the, um, manure of the pigs. It's got into wetlands, it's caused issues. I don't know if you guys know exactly what I'm talking about, but...
I think I do.
Um, the thing with the pigs is it's regulated through the state. So, you have the Concom going down there looking at wetlands issues and whatnot, but the, the state comes out and does the inspections on it. So, now it's joint between the state, conservation, Board of Health, and the landowner. And in this case, the landowner had been there twenty, thirty years. So, you know, um, we've had other issues, and I know Ann, and Lisa, I believe you were there too, with bird farms, and not necessarily chickens, but lots and lots of birds. And over time, again, the birds, um, you know, go to the bathroom, it keeps building up, building up, building up. And over time, it's like, you know, change of elevation from it. Do you remember that? And they, the owner cleaned out.
Yeah.
Disrupted what he was doing and blew that neighborhood away for quite a while. And they were involved, Board of Health was involved. It was clean, it was, it was okay, but it was, um, it fell under the smell. It was terrible. So, we've had issues like that.
And I think that's where a change to the bylaw is helpful. Because if somebody comes in, one of the things that the board can do is limit the number of animals they can have. They can't say you cannot have chickens, but they can say your property and where your neighbors are in your neighborhood, your chicken limit is six. And, and they can cap it, so we don't have these issues with people who have way too many animals for the amount of property that they have as far as manure piles and wetland issues. And, you know, people who live near lakes may have bigger issues with the number of animals they can have, where are you putting your manure, you know. So, that, that's another reason that I, I like, I like this.
It also gets into the trespassing issue of it. I'm thinking of a case with rabbits. They would, you know, clean the cage out, throw it over the stone wall. Well, they didn't own the land on the other side of the stone wall. And so, then that was kind of an issue. Jim Philbrook, the health inspector, went out, had a discussion. But in every case that I'm talking about so far, all of those parcels of land have been larger than five acres. So, those problems, you know, aren't really going to change much, but it will eliminate with the, the new construction or the moving in of the smaller lots, so.
Would it ever get down to a point where, what's our minimum size lot?
Um, in the, about eighty percent of the town, if you look at the zoning map, is in the agricultural zone, which is sixty thousand square feet. Unless it's a cluster subdivision, in exchange for preserving the open space, they can go down to forty thousand. And an acre is forty-three thousand five sixty, so a little less than an acre, ranging up to about an acre and a half.
So, a lot of your small subdivisions that have just an acre lot, they wouldn't be allowed to have any chickens?
No, they'd have to come in for the site plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there a point when your lot gets so small that it can't support livestock?
That's what I'm...
That's those lake properties you do.
And it, it depends on what animals too. I mean, somebody with just ten chickens,
it's not that big a deal, but if they bring in three horses, well, now it's...
There are a few communities that Joe surveyed, and I spoke to a few planners, that require the special permit. But the problem is the special permit is discretionary. A board can say, unsuitable, we're denying you. And I think if we ask for the special permit at town meeting, it would not go through. We've learned that on many, many things. This is not a special permit zoning community. And we have a small handful of them, such as Common Driveway. The reduced frontage one is a trade-off, so people like it. Give us the five acres to preserve, and you can cut your frontage down to only fifty feet. That's a special permit. It's about it, you know. I, if you wanted to follow in the footsteps of one of those communities, I just don't think you'd get out of the gate at town meeting. I think you need to emphasize to people, we're not telling you you can't do it, we just want to make sure it's done right.
Well, that was the other thing that we talked about, was would it even fly at town meeting to say, less than two acres, you're prohibited from having sheep. Go toward, right now, you can have everything regardless of your acreage. When I lived in Virginia, you were not allowed to have a horse unless you had a minimum of two acres of land, because they're grazing animals.
Right.
They need to walk around and graze. So, but it's a matter of what the town will tolerate. So, you hate, you know, you try to find a happy medium so that you can protect the interests of the people who live next door, while also protecting the interests of the people who own their own land and have a right to do on it what they wish. So, we didn't really get into prohibiting any particular type of animal on any particular amount of acreage.
Yeah.
It would be an option, but it, it didn't seem like we really knew it in that direction. Well, common sense goes a long way, but sometimes people don't use the common sense. They don't. You know, you want two or three horses, then you need to have a parcel to accommodate two or three horses. If you want five chickens, then you just need a little bit of space for five chickens. That doesn't mean over the course of time that those five chickens can turn into two hundred chickens, you know. And, I mean, that's something too. I mean, you start off with five, and oh, we have five, and in two years, now we have five hundred of them, and what happens then? On the same little piece of land. The Animal Inspector, which falls under the Board of Health and the state, they are charged with inspecting all of the barns every year, between October and December. So, I would imagine that if this were to pass, just like now, if the Animal Inspector goes out and there is an issue with smell, whatever, number of animals, weight of animals, health of animals, that, that basically triggers a, you need to fix these things, we're going to come back and re-inspect. If you don't fix these things, we're going to get other people involved, or that may be. So, if, if the, if this were to pass, and the planning board were to say, you are only permitted to have, you know, two horses on this property based on the amount of land that you had, if the Animal Inspector went out and did an inspection, and there were more than that many animals, I would think at that point that would trigger the process to remediate.
Keep in mind, the Animal Inspection Process is a voluntary program. So, you do have the risk of people saying, I don't want any inspections, because they may be hiding something.
And that's where...
That's not, that's not true.
But also, that's where this comes in, because anything under the zoning bylaw comes under Chapter Forty-eight Police Power, and the planning board, its representative and the building commissioner cannot be blocked from going in if it came through a planning board permit.
And Animal Inspector also cannot be blocked from going in.
Can, has the right to enter the premises of the barn to inspect a farm animal at any time. And if they don't, the police can come down, and you can give them a hundred dollar fine for not allowing an inspector to come on and inspect, and it's their yearly inspection. They have every right to.
And if they still refuse to allow entry, then the state is called, and the state will send an inspector. So, there will be an inspection. It's protected under Mass General Law. The farm animal registration that Matt's referring to is a voluntary form that the state encourages all livestock owners to fill out for disaster planning. So, if I have two horses, but I have five stalls, and we have a disaster, the Animal Inspector knows that I've got space to take on a couple more horses. That part of it is voluntary. The inspection itself is not voluntary. That is mandatory and is run through the state.
We've had tops, uh, topics with the state. Mike Cahill has come down. He's the, was the director.
He's the director of the animal.
We laid it out on the table, Mass General Law, this is what it is. And at the end of the day, the Board of Health and, um, the state did not read the law clearly, although it was black and white on there. And so, there was a discrepancy about that. I think to this day, there's still a discrepancy about that. And, um, at the end of that meeting that didn't go very well, everybody agreed to disagree. And that's how it was left. And, uh, as far as the inspections go, it was said, if the Animal Inspector was to come on the property and the resident said, don't come on my property, it was, okay, well, then that's fine, we won't go on the property, but we need to notify the state, and you'll get a phone call from the state. And so, that was, it took the stress off of the Animal Inspector trying to deal with that, you know, situation. So, it was, it was, it was, you know, and it was over chickens and whatnot. It was a pretty, it was a big deal at the time. And, uh, and I don't think it was ever resolved, so it would definitely be up, you know, Mass General Law says it right there.
Three people could read it and interpret it three different ways.
Exactly.
It's, you can imply what you think the intent was, but somebody else can have a different implied thought of what it was.
I think that's a case of what happened and potentially could happen. So, if it does go through the zoning, then it's locked in.
Right.
And it takes that element of it out. Now, it's a whole nother, this is why.
Take one.
The wording, the, the warrant article itself would be very simple. I mean, it would, it would propose changing those two lines. I just wanted to get an understanding to provide the staff assistance. We looking at the two, up to two acres requiring the site plan? And then, um, is that the number we're comfortable with? Because I hear you said sixty thousand at one point in the discussion.
I had thought, Alan, I thought you and I had said sixty thousand. So, that's, it's not a number that's, you know, anything partial to me or anything, you know, I really don't...
One reason we came up with, talking about the two acres at the last meeting, and you're right, you and I talked about that, because that's the, um, minimum required size. But we do see in some of the subdivisions, they scatter a few lots, a little more than the sixty thousand. You know, it'll, it'll hit the two acre thing. They certainly don't go more than two, you know, because they're trying to maximize, and that kind of urbanizes the layout, and that creates these types of issues, so. I think also that you're giving a carrot here, that right now, um, we've got that five and five. By switching to two and two, anyone bigger than that doesn't have to do it, and they would be supportive of saying, well, you know, if I've got three acres or four acres, I'm okay, so I'll vote for it because I understand the intent of what they're trying to do, trying to get some support for it. Um, I could provide final wording for your next meeting, and then you could consider voting to submit it for the warrant.
If, at our next meeting, if you get some final wording, um, I'd like to just give it to the, to the Animal Control Officer and that, just to...
Sure.
Just make sure we put the right wording that you guys would agree with too.
I can get it to you guys, you know, during the work date between now and the next town, the next planning board meeting, so you have it ahead of time to...
Sure.
Sure.
Just, just in case we put the wrong and or the wrong that right there.
Yeah.
The wrong common, the wrong place. I'm a stickler for ands and those. Do you think the Board of Health was, would support a change?
Personally, I do not think the Board of Health would support a change. I think it would take a, a discussion, you know, firsthand to explain it. I don't think I would be able to explain it to the board enough convincingly to have a change. I don't think I would be able to explain it to the board enough convincingly to have a change.
And I, I did tell Matt that maybe three years ago, um, a previous planning board member brought it up. You brought it up because you're dealing with an issue. The board member brought it up back then in terms of, you know, we're the only community that doesn't do this. Should we look into it? Maybe let's do something. And I talked to Nelson at the time and he was very adamantly opposed. And he, his comment to me at the time was, it's Board of Health business, no one should intrude. And I said, I fully respect your concern, but I tried to explain and I couldn't convince him that, um, it's adding a different type of review element beyond what you do. Legally in Massachusetts, it's worked really well. And that's why every town I can find does it other than us. We're at the end of the spectrum. I think there's only a couple in Massachusetts that don't do it. Central Mass, I haven't found one, no matter how small they are, that doesn't do it in some manner like this. Because the planning board has the legal authority on land use management and lot creation and lot management to how you develop the lots. So you're adding a component that doesn't step on Board of Health and Animal Control's toes, but he just wasn't comfortable with it. So I, I hear where you're coming from of, you know, your judgment of it is probably pretty accurate. But, you know, you try, dialogue and hopefully. Uh, do you think it would help if we invited Board of Health to the hearing? Cause the board has to do an advisory hearing before town meeting. Do you think they'd be comfortable coming and having a discussion on it? Maybe we can work it out or?
I think it's worth a shot. Cause I, I really think, I think as soon as you say, you know, we wanna change the law with the animals, the earmuffs go on and they don't hear the rest of, you know, they, they just don't wanna hear it.
Yeah.
You know, and, uh, and I'm not saying that in a negative way to the board or anything.
Right.
But they just, we're not having those complaints. These guys are out in the field. They see it every day. We don't. We sit and we get an occasional complaint. And, you know, and, and, and every complaint I mentioned, it wouldn't, it wouldn't refer to this anyways. So, um, you'd have to, by all means, you know, if you invite us, I'm sure we will go. Um, you know, I would, I would like to think that all three of us showed up to it. So, um, it's worth a shot because it is important in those smaller lots. I mean, personally, as a resident, I wouldn't wanna have to live next to chickens and roosters if I was on one of these lakeside houses or whatnot. They smell, they're loud. You can only get rid of the, uh, the feces at so many different places, you know. Then what into the tri, I, you know, they're a lot of work.
Yeah.
And, um, but I know, um, general consensus in this town, um, it's a sensitive, they like their chickens. A lot of people do, so.
And they can still have them.
Correct.
Which is a bonus. So.
And you have had some big complaints about a place that was less than two acres.
Didn't we?
I believe.
Yeah.
That's the one I thought was larger than that.
Two point oh two.
Also technically they are over.
Like just makes, just makes the, the thought.
But there was a lot of complaints.
Yeah. And that may have been a motorcycle and everything, but all of that.
Yeah, I think that's why.
I think we'll have to emphasize at the hearing and at town meeting again that under Massachusetts zoning, anything existing is grandfathered. So we're not going after anybody. It's setting the tone for future development that is small scale and urban in style. I think that's one point that hopefully can be helped.
They help.
Right. And, and we would, you know, we didn't, I've been to enough town meetings. I would really like, if the Board of Health supported it, that, that's better. You know, I, it, you never wanna go to town meeting and have boards, you know, the board brings it forth and Animal Control says it's great
Not supporting it.
Yeah.
and Board of Health goes, nope. We'd rather try to come together and, and all be on the same page because I just, I think it makes for a, a more, you know, consensus is always good.
Hmm.
And, and I've been to enough meetings to know that, you know, once you start infighting among boards, it, things are really not gonna pass very well. So we would like to try to gain the support of the Board of Health before we went to the, to the town meeting floor. So if they're willing to come and hear or meet or put Ann and I on your agenda and, you know, we can just have like a general discussion about things, you know, it's kind of the same things you're talking about here. I'm more than happy to, to do that. And as far as the roosters, which I'll sort of mention, but didn't, for the most part, the only way to, to, the best way to handle that, if you were going to do it, would be an ordinance. And it would be a Board of Health ordinance. That would come from your board.
Mm-hmm.
As opposed to the chickens, just the crowing. There's a lot of towns that have literally no rooster. The Board of Health says we're not allowed to have one.
Yeah.
But that's not something that we would be addressing in the zoning change. This would be strictly a change on acreage.
Little muzzles from roosters.
Will, they make little rooster muzzles. I don't know if they work.
They don't hurt the roosters.
Yeah.
Okay. So if the board moves forward, this is middle in February, then the board would probably schedule in March or April, uh, a public hearing in which they'd be finalizing their opinion that they'd present at town meeting. And then you've got the May town meeting. So that would be the schedule.
Okay. All right. Appreciate ya.
Thanks for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Definitely, guys. Appreciate it.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's getting cold in here.
Dog license, dog licenses are in. If anybody has a dog, go get your license. Before March first.
I think it's getting colder outside, so it's getting colder in there.
Good night, thank you.
Not bad. All right, um, we've got a couple of things on your agenda.
Yeah, just really quickly, um, also for your next meeting, I can give you wording for the two other, limited in word, but important in effect, uh, potential warrant articles. One would be a village district one, like we discussed, that would have two elements in the warrant article, uh, allowing cluster residential development and village zoning. So now that we've added six hundred more acres, we could preserve some open space by allowing that option. And second of all, allowing auction galleries in the village district where right now it's not allowed. So that fits in with Kenny LeBlanc's proposal, which would be nice. That can be one warrant article for both items, cause it's village related. And the third one that the planning board would consider sponsoring is, um, allowing through site plan approval, commercial storage facilities in IG and CB zones along Route twenty, the type of thing. Um, there's a couple of other things floating out there. We've talked before and it's up to the private individuals if they petition or not. There's Ron Gauthier's proposed zoning amendment. I'm sure Casella is dead right now and we would tell them if they contacted us, do not even consider this. Please deal with your Board of Health responsibilities first. And then Russ Jennings has said he's been talking with some of his opponents about jointly together, maybe proposing a, uh, modification that would prevent future motocross. It's to his benefit in terms of not having any others. It's to their benefit of not expanding that. So if he wants to submit that, that would come in for hearing too. That's all that I'm aware of. People can always propose, you know, zoning map provisions on their property between now and March or April. So. So that's it, um, on the, on the zoning and planning warrant articles.
Sounds like we did budget.
Yep.
So we just cut the growth management?
I just had two items. Uh, we already talked Pawnican under that. And the other one of the two housing authority, affordable housing planning efforts. Um, one, I've been meeting with Mike Andrade and Bill Scanlon as they've done the, the engineering analysis and it really looks positive. What they'd both like to do is be on your agenda for your second meeting in February, which I think is February twentieth. I think we meet the third.
Three.
And then the seventeenth, I'm sorry.
Seventeenth.
And, um, they'll come in with some concept layouts and I'll invite, um, John LaFlesh. And if he can make it, it's somebody from the staff. And they've analyzed the site in terms of topography, wet versus dry. And Mike took some templates in terms of layout for potential affordable housing in one area and also templates for potential multi-use field for Bay Path. And by then he'll have something more substantive that will be a first, roll up your sleeves and brainstorm together type of thing. Um, so I can put that in for the seventeenth. And the other one is, as I was mentioning to Gene before the meeting, um, I was fortunate today to talk to one of our staff advisors at a mass development on the financing route and the consultant for the center project. And he recommended an excellent financial analysis consultant I'm gonna call tomorrow. Because again, we need somebody to, um, put together the financial proposal to mass development. And this woman has a good reputation. And we probably would have her come in for a work meeting with myself and Gene and Mike Andrade and see if she's the right fit or else he could provide us with somebody else. So. Those are my growth management items.
Okay. Any other items you'd like to adjust tonight?
Yeah, uh, just my regular list, which is fairly brief.
Okay.
Uh, the first is from Graves. It's just the latest update, January eleventh of the project status sheet for everybody. Two there.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. And three around the corner. Uh, second, just a heads up that, um, as you know, every spring, we have the statewide citizen planning, um, planner training collaborative at Holy Cross College. It's the statewide conference in which, um, planning boards and planning directors, um, can attend workshops and panels. And Gene, Patty Ridlack and I have gone to the last three or four, if any other board members wanna go. Um, they've set the date for Saturday, March nineteenth, but we don't have any specific information yet or registration. As soon as we get any of that, we'll share it with you. But just to give you the date, it's at Holy Cross College, Saturday, March nineteenth. And I plan on going again. And I, I hope any board members would like to go. Um, the annual report is due February twenty-fifth and I'd like to put it on your agenda either the next meeting or the meeting after. I'm just in the midst of working on it. But I do wanna say something tonight. I've been crunching the revenue numbers for calendar year two thousand fifteen. And again, given the level of activity, we've gone up between three and four hundred percents in various revenues because of the amount of projects that are being applied for and built. And, uh, you'll see an astronomical change from two thousand fourteen when I give you the final version. Um, the zoning bylaw update that was approved by the Attorney General from the last town meeting, we're having some printed up. And we'll give you copies when that is up to date. The town clerk asked us just to remind you, if you haven't taken the online mass ethics test and given her the printout certificate, you could either give it to Jane or the town clerk. Um, without going into naming developers, cause both parties have asked me not to name in public and we're obviously on cable this evening. Um, the industrial project that is moving forward, um, on Route twenty that we've talked about, um, and, uh, is moving forward very well with their engineers. They've hired McClure Engineering as their main civil engineer. And it will probably be about six weeks from now that they'll submit because McClure is doing, uh, a flyover and designing the drainage and the wetlands from that. So it's their timeframe. We would be glad to take it in and get it going anytime. But that's moving forward. And the second one, again, um, the Gardner property on Route twenty, as you know, we've, it's actually right behind Ross to the right. We've worked with Kevin Gardner, the family member from California, who's the trustee for the family. And I had connected him with that, um, large utility company that was looking in the future for something. And they have optioned the site. They've signed an option agreement. Um, the company would not do anything for several years. They're looking to build, um, their type of business. From a marketing point of view, they're studying this part of the state to expand. And so they like that site in terms of its privacy and being able to do something small scale in the middle, that would be part of their network. But, uh, Kevin did call to tell me and told me I could tell the board that he did sign an option with them. So that's where that property is at the moment. Um, the other site plans we've talked about, there's three different eight to ten thousand square foot buildings uh, for businesses along Route twenty. And Mike Andrade and I have been meeting regularly and working with the designers for all three of them. So at some points, sooner than later, they'll come before you for site plan review. And the last item I wanted to mention is Jane is spreadsheeting a specific spreadsheet that I'd like to share with you probably at the next meeting for just the solar arrays. As you know, we've approved thirteen of them. And we have at least five or six more in the pipeline. So the way we spreadsheet subdivisions, spreadsheet just for that, you'll be able to see who the project is, the location of it, the megawatt size of it, the date the planning board issued the site plan and when it goes online. So you'll have all of that handy and we'll keep updating it over time. I told the building commissioner and he said he'd like a copy of it. I said, absolutely. Be good to, any general information. Those are my items. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We do have some minutes from previous meetings, but there's three of us here. Is this something we wanna hold on tonight for thirty minutes or do you wanna carry? Uh, I should go copy them or get some of them off the agenda?
Yeah. Cause a couple of them, um, Alicia being here or not isn't gonna make any difference cause she wasn't at the meeting.
Right.
I think we can go ahead and do what we can do, just to get them cleared out.
Mm-hmm.
What about the November eighteenth one? Cause, uh, there's only you and I present. You gotta, currently here present for that one.
Um.
November eighteen?
Yeah.
Well, then when would be the term to?
We need a.
No, cause they've been voted.
My meeting minutes, what's the, uh, rule on vo- voting?
Excuse me, I was.
What's the rule on voting on meeting minutes?
Cause we've got Pete wasn't here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If they're not here, um, at that particular meeting.
I'm obvious, I, I honestly, I'm not sure. I don't know. I know you need a majority of the board to approve minutes.
Okay.
I don't know if it's an issue or not, if a member is voting and wasn't present at the particular meeting. I don't think it matters, but.
They can't.
The eighteenth we'll probably have to carry.
Yeah.
Cause there's only, just.
Only two of us.
I'm not aware of it. Wanna err on the side of caution and not do it. I can check with the town clerk on that one for you.
Yeah. Yeah, that'd be great.
I'll ask her tomorrow.
Okay, the October seventh, the October seventh month, we gotta carry too.
Yeah, Cal can vote. He's.
Cal can vote. That'll give you the straight.
Yeah. It's administrative, so Cal can vote.
Yeah, October seventh, we should be good if Cal can vote.
Yeah.
Yeah.
October seventh.
Mm-hmm.
We got two people missing off of that. So it'll only be one, two, three, and I saw four.
Less majority.
All right, why don't we take a minute, read that one?
Yeah.
Do I have a motion to accept the minutes of the October seventh, two thousand fifteen as drafted?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Back to me.
I see.
You wanna do the, um, October twenty-first?
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Take a minute, read that one.
Anything on the bottom, um, motion to adjourn, we have at nine fifteen. It should be like eight twenty. Just go.
Yep, yep, okay.
You wanna change that?
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions on October twenty-first?
No, they're making a motion.
So, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, when it's first, we did an executive session.
Yeah, you'd have to go into executive to approve it.
Okay. And is it really not?
We can do November fourth, no?
Yep.
Okay. Take a minute and read it. So I have a motion for the November fourth, two thousand fifteen minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The, uh, November eighth, you've gotta hold up on that one.
Yeah.
Yeah. There you go, bud. Um, we have the two draft executive session ones. Do you wanna wait and do those or? What do you think, Gene?
Carl.
You gotta go into exec- executive session to do it.
Yeah, yeah, no matter.
Yeah.
Yeah, certainly.
I, I don't mind doing it, but we gotta finish up the regular meeting.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll hold them off for now.
Yep.
Um, so we still need to do the November eighteenth minutes.
Yeah, we'll get probably for the next.
Yep.
Put one piece of paper here. No, right now, uh, all right. Any other, Alan, any other issues for tonight?
Just a reminder, I forgot to mention, uh, Jane and I gave you, it's brand new, it's the updated zoning map at a eleven by seventeen size.
Yeah.
And that includes the village district expansion. And that's the, uh, violet color.
Yeah.
Looks good.
Thank you.
It's real good.
Yeah, Matt Franz at Central Mass has been great doing our computer mapping for us.
Board members have any other?
No.
Notes? Okay, um, we're going to, uh, adjourn into executive session. And to executive session on the Massachusetts General Law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, number two. So, that concludes the scheduled agenda portion of this meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion for adjourn?
Mm-hmm.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.